Bring the Oregon City Planning Commission meeting for May 22nd, year 2002, to order. I so bring it to order. First question of this evening is, there any public comment on items not listed on tonight's agenda? Do you have an item that's not listed on the agenda? If it's on the agenda, then we'll have to wait till it comes up. It's on the agenda, so. A continuance is on the agenda. Yeah, okay, thanks. Hearing no comments from items not listed on the agenda, we'll move to the approval of the minutes of May 8th, 2000. Are there any commission members wishing to make additions or corrections to the May 8th, 2000 minutes?
I have a correction on page two where it says Commissioner Orson asked about the community downtown plan and how it fits in with the, I meant to say Clackamas Cove master plan, not Clackamas Park.
Yes ma'am, it does. No ma'am, I can't. No ma'am. That's, okay. Thank you. Now we'll go back to the review of the minutes. Planning commissioners wishing to make corrections or changes?
Good morning, ma'am.
Excuse me, I'm sorry Commissioner Orson, I couldn't find where you were.
Page two?
Page two.
You said page two.
I'm sorry, it's the third.
Number up on the top.
Page three.
Oh, page three.
Halfway down.
Well Maggie, it should've.
Sorry.
Halfway down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did you find it Maggie?
I did.
Okay. Any other corrections or additions to the minutes from the commission?
I have none.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes with corrections as stated for May 8th, 2000.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion that has a second. Would you please poll the commission?
Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vergon?
Aye.
Commissioner Surratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chairperson Hewitt?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous.
Thank you. The remainder of the meeting tonight will be reviewing quasi judicial matters before the planning commission. And to do that, I have to boringly read a statement, so bear with me. There are two quasi judicial public hearings on land use applications which are scheduled for this evening. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available seven days before tonight's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report along with written comments and input received through the public notification process for each application. The quasi judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on a chart which is to my left here. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a yellow slip and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Letters, reports, and pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they are submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and address. Testimony and evidence should be directed towards the applicable approval criteria, and if you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing a continuance or to keep the record open must make the request before the public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, House Bill 2406 of the 1999 legislature requires us to announce the following. Quote, "The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in circuit court," end of quote. Also, we have a public hearing procedure and limitations of minutes for speakers representing the applicant and the application process. If you are here as a person representing the applicant and you will be doing the primary speaking for the applicant, you are allowed 15 minutes to deliver your report. If you're here in support of the applicant, in favor of the application, you are allowed five minutes. If you're representing yourself, if you're representing a CPO or other group, you need to let us know that and you're allowed 15 minutes. If you're in opposition, the same applies. Five minutes if you're representing yourself and 15 minutes if you're representing a group. At the end of that time, the applicant is allowed 15 minutes in which to rebut any response in opposition. Typically, that's how it will go. Then the meeting, the public meeting will be closed and will be deliberated by the planning commission with various questions. When the planning commission asks you questions, that does not apply to your time at the podium. So be aware that I'll keep track of that and I'll also keep track of time that we ask questions. You may be up there for 20 or 25 minutes. Okay, having that set aside, the first public hearing is conditional use. 00-04, Dr. J. Mead at 502 McLaughlin Boulevard, Clackamas County. Request is convert an existing residence into a doctor's office with an associated parking lot on an adjacent parcel. I need to ask the question to the planning commission members, does any commissioner have any ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statements to declare on this application?
None.
None?
None.
Okay. Did any commissioners visit the site? Looks like nobody visited the site. Okay, thank you. I'm assuming that Mr. Bullion will be representing?
That is correct.
Staff report? Thank you.
Good evening Chair Hewitt and fellow planning commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for a conditional use. Is that on now? Okay, start over. Good evening Chair Hewitt and fellow planning commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for a conditional use for a doctor's office along with an associated neat space parking lot. The subject property, which you can see marked in red on the overhead slide, the subject property consists of two tax lots with different zoning designations. Tax Lot 3900, which contains the house running McLaughlin Boulevard, is zoned HC Historic Commercial. Tax Lot 6300, which contains the backyard of the house and a small detached garage, is zoned R6 Single Family Residential. A doctor's office is a conditional use in the Historic Commercial District and the parking lot is also a conditional use in the R6 Single Family Dwelling District. In addition to the review of the applicant's proposal by the planning commission tonight, the proposal will also be reviewed by the Historic Review Board and by planning staff as part of the site plan and design review process. Planning commission must approve this conditional use permit prior to these other processes beginning. The size of the parcel, which is 9,500 square feet for both tax lots, will allow the use of the existing historic home as a doctor's office while still allowing for a small eight space parking lot in the backyard, basically to comply with city off-street parking requirements. The proposed use of the property as a doctor's office and small parking lot would be much less intensive than other existing commercial uses in the same area and would help to preserve and maintain the existing historic home. The city's traffic engineer reported no traffic related concerns and no comments were received from any of the neighbors. In closing, staff recommends that the planning commission approve CU 0004 with two conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions I could answer the commission?
Any questions by the planning commission staff?
Yes, I just wanted to know what the conditions for approval were.
Basically to, that the applicant be required to go through the site plan and design review process, follow any conditions of approval generated from that, and then also go through Historic Review Board, consistency review, and comply with any of those conditions.
You will find them as Exhibit 5 in your package?
No.
Yes?
I was kind of taken back by two conditions for a conditional use. That's pretty small.
That's true, although I think the fairly limited number of impacts for this, also the fact that it will be going through two other review processes. For example, as part of the site plan and design review process, look at some specific landscaping and screening requirements. There's also specific provisions as part of the site plan and design review process in terms of lighting, minimum standard for lighting onsite and a maximum amount that's allowed offsite. But I guess it seemed like the use is a fairly low impact in this area. There's also a large amount of mature landscaping basically on the back tax lot, which basically would serve to screen the properties to the west. So basically, it seemed like the concerns could be covered through those two processes.
This permit came in before adoption of the, well, I'm not even sure that the parking ordinance has been adopted yet. Is that correct? It has?
The effective date is June 2nd, I believe.
Would that affect this application?
Depending when they submitted the site plan and design review portion.
Okay. The application says that there will be six parking spots, but yet the, at least that's what I remember reading. Eight?
The...
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven is what I've got. On my drawing?
The drawing, I believe, shows eight including a handicap.
Well, isn't the handicap one?
Yeah.
So I mean, that's not, that's, I mean, it's one. So you got seven? Am I missing? Because isn't that a scratched area for the handicap, not considered a parking spot but access for the handicap?
That may be the aisle width for the van accessible parking space.
So where's the, where's number eight?
Well...
I mean, it's just, that's what was, that was what was presented and that's what we're going to agree upon. And then the site design, they're going to come back to you and say, well, we were granted seven. And I'm saying, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, if you, if you, that appears to be a, basically an aisle, so that would be seven.
Does that still meet the standards that we need for parking for a doctor's office?
Yeah, it should accommodate that because the parking ratio is one per 300 square feet of gross floor area and a portion of that, a portion of the building could also be for storage, which is a lesser parking requirement.
Okay.
So that, as shown, it should be able to accommodate their requirement.
Well, I know metro, we've agreed to go to the lesser of metro and...
As part of the TSP process.
Right, right. So that's, seven should meet that for the square footage and what the...
Yeah.
Okay.
They should still be covered with that.
Is there any other parking, if a person needed to be onsite affiliated with this structure?
All of Miller Street would be available for parking. It's a, as far as off-site parking, it's a lightly used street adequate with for on-street parking.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Bullion?
I just have one. I was just curious if, because the house faces onto McLaughlin and the parking is going to be behind, what are they going to do for their main entrance onto the property?
There basically is proposed to be an ADA accessible, basically a handicap accessible ramp at the rear. So that in essence will be their primary entrance because people will be parking at the rear and using that ramp and that entrance. There is an existing entrance, of course, at the front, but basically the entrance facing the parking lot will become the main door for the structure.
We don't have to meet any mass transit requirements?
Well, the house is existing and if, even if it were proposed to be new construction, that would still meet, basically would be a transit oriented building because it's built so close to McLaughlin.
Okay, well, my question, my question comes from, I wouldn't expect someone coming off of transit to go down the side if they were wheelchair accessible. And there needs to be access from the sidewalk to the, to the, to the structure itself and not having to go out around into the parking lot and then use the access in. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Is there?
Wouldn't that cover the design review?
I'm just trying to find out if it, if it's going to be.
That's one of the criteria in looking at a site plan and design review is accessibility and connectivity.
Connectivity from the sidewalk, so you will be reviewing that.
From the street sidewalk.
Yeah, because not...
On-street and off-site.
Okay.
Or onsite and off-site.
Well, not having that in front of me is hard to tell what's going to happen down the road. And I just want to make sure that there is sidewalk accessibility there. If you park on Miller Street, you walk onto the sidewalk, you should be able to gain access without having to go through the parking lot or clear around to the front of the building.
Right, we usually do look at provision of direct pedestrian and bicycle ADA accessibility as part of that review.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bullion.
Thank you.
I have no yellow slips, so I'm assuming that no one is representing the applicant We should take a break and listen to the game. Okay.
My name is Rick Givens, I'm a planning consultant representing the applicant. Very brief because staff did an excellent job discussing the major issues in the preparation of the staff report. I will offer a more detailed site plan as being prepared for the site design review because it gets at some of the issues that Chairman Hewitt was talking about. Parking will be seven spaces as you like. This is not finished, so I'll splash out the, yeah, parking van area. Basically, the house runs onto 99E. There's an existing sidewalk on 99E. Sidewalk to the house, steps up to porch. There will be an ADA ramp extended along the side of the home.
Mr. Givens, I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, but people at home are going to try and listen to this, and if you don't move over in front of that speaker, they're not going to hear anything you're saying. So, I'm sorry.
I don't know that I have a problem with that.
Well, they would, it's kind of...
I'll try here again.
Okay, thank you.
The ADA ramp goes along the side of the home so that people accessing the office from the parking lot will come in to the rear from sidewalk from the parking lot and up a ramp and then into the front door of the office building. There is additionally a service entrance up the rear corner of the home. So I think it meets all the requirements.
So there, there is no access except, I mean, from the sidewalk, there is no access in the back at all? You have to go around to the front and...
No, I'm, there is a door here and a door right in front.
Okay, but is there a sidewalk from the, is there a sidewalk from the sidewalk to the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I...
Let you prove...
Okay, are you entering this as an exhibit?
I will.
Okay.
This will be Exhibit A.
Eight? One of one? Oh, A. I'm, okay. Well, that's okay, as long as we get it straight.
I guess the only other comment I would have is attaching a conditional approval, requiring something that's already required by ordinance, I don't know if that's really necessary. Design review is required by ordinance as is the historic review. My only point in making that statement is that my client would like to get on with the interior remodeling, which is not affected by those applications, just as soon as this decision becomes effective. So I would like, if possible, you to note in your decision that he may in fact proceed with those prior to the approval of the historic review and the site design review. Again, those things do not impact at all the interior remodeling. I talked that over with staff, Mr. Paul Espin, he's indicated that staff has no objection to that. That's all I have, unless you have some questions up there.
Any questions from the planning commission? Okay, thank you, Mr. Givens. Don't forget to fill out that yellow slip and give it to the planning.
Did you see the sidewalk down there? To the, to the back of the building? Yeah, no, no, to the back of the building from the sidewalk. Okay, I didn't either. I'm kind of confused. Here. It's right where? A sidewalk to the sidewalk out here in front. Well, this is where people are going to park.
Well, we'll discuss that. We'll discuss that. Sure, come on up.
This is 99E, the house fronts to 99E. There is a sidewalk from the existing public sidewalk on 99E to the house up the stairs. There is a sidewalk from the parking lot to the, both door and to the ramp that leads around to the front of the house.
Okay, my question is, what's the problem of connectivity right here? So if somebody parks here, they don't have to walk through the parking lot?
Mr. Chairman, when you talk about right here, you better specify for the word where you're talking. Be glad it went.
He agreed. What we were talking about is at the back of the building, connectivity to the existing sidewalk on Miller Street, to the back of the building where the sidewalk will be for handicap access, for the record, on Exhibit A, one of one. No further questions on that. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none? Is there anybody wishing to speak opposed to this application? Hearing none? Since there will be probably no rebuttal, we will close the public portion of the hearing and bring it for discussion amongst the planning commission. And the first question that I would have to the planning, Mr. Bullion, would be, do you have any problems if we allowed the tenant improvements prior to design review and historic review?
Well, if the applicant is referring to interior work that only requires a building permit, that's, that's, that would be allowed in any case. You know, and you could actually do some other onsite improvements, basically you just couldn't occupy it as a doctor's office until they'd gone through the site plan and design review and historic review boards.
Okay.
May I clarify the historic review? Aren't there some limitations on what you can do to a historic building as far as the interior remodeling that this might, I mean, new windows or new walls or...
Not the interior work, but they do look at exterior, including windows, the ADA accessible ramp. They may even look at the parking lot. So they're primarily...
But there's nothing in the historic review that would cover any of the interior?
Not interior construction or renovation.
Okay.
But exterior, they do.
Okay, thank you.
So if we made, if we made a recommendation that the tenant improvements can continue as would, would be allowed under the present building code and planning, barring any facade changes, that would be appropriate?
I think...
Facade meaning windows?
Oh, well...
I mean, you can't go to metal windows, I know that in historic review, I learned that the hard way.
I think that if you can recommend, like you say, that the applicant be allowed to work inside the building during the next two review phases that the applicant is required to go through, that's totally appropriate and then staff can take it from there.
Okay. Hopefully whoever's going to make that motion heard that. Because I'm not going to make the motion. Okay, any discussion on, on the application? It appears everything's in order. Hearing, hearing no discussions, is there a motion?
I will make a motion regarding application CU 0004. A request to convert an existing residence into a doctor's office with an associated parking lot on an adjacent parcel. I move that the application be approved, including the recommended conditions of approval set forth by staff and also including a, a, further, I don't know whether to call it condition or recommendation, a further recommendation that the applicant can proceed with internal improvements in construction and renovation so long as the applicant complies with all applicable permit requirements and, and the, and the applicable codes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second?
Okay, I have a motion that has been second. Would you please poll the commission?
Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Uh, commi, this is on...
Doesn't sound like it. Renee's going to fix that.
All right, there we go. Okay. Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vergon?
Aye.
Commissioner Surratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chairperson Hewitt?
Aye.
And we're taking the recommendation to be that, a recommendation rather than a condition.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. That seemed appropriate.
Oh. And did Commissioner Vergon mean to make that motion including the findings, the fact, and conclusions in the staff report? of fact and conclusions in the staff report?
Yes, that's what Mr. Commissioners Vergon intent was.
Excellent.
Okay, that concludes hearing for judicial use. The next order of business quasi judicial hearing is for file number VR 00-03. It's a variance to allow reestablishment of an existing lot of record smaller than 5,000 square feet. 509 Roosevelt Street in Clackamas County, Oregon City. Staff person on this is Mr. Bullion again.
Good evening, Chair Hewitt and fellow planning commissioners. For you tonight is a request for a variance to allow reestablishment of an existing lot of record smaller than 5,000 square feet. Oregon City Municipal Code, Section 1712050 states, quote, "An existing lot of record with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet may only be occupied by a single-family dwelling provided that yard requirements are met. An existing lot with an area of less than 5,000 square feet is subject to variance procedures pursuant to Chapter 17.60. If the variance is granted, the only permitted use is a single-family dwelling." That's basically the reason that this request is before you tonight. And the lot with the proposed, basically, the proposed line to be added to recreate the lot of record is shown on the overhead slide. Lot 14 of Mount Hood View subdivision was originally platted at 45 by 100 feet, or 4,500 square feet total. The plat was recorded in 1912. The applicant would like to reestablish this lot, which contains existing single-family residents. And a more detailed drawing is shown in your packet as exhibit two. The remainder of the property, which is lot 15 and a portion of lot 16, would be left at 67 feet by 100 feet, or 6700 square feet, and thus would meet the current R6 minimum dimensional standards. Transmittals on the proposal were sent to various city departments, affected agencies, and property owners within 300 feet. Limited comments were received. One comment was from the, the building official, and basically his concern was that the existing house with the recreation of that line would be only two feet from that property line, which would not normally be allowed under the building code. And as a point of clarification, planning staff does not normally consider the zoning setbacks for existing buildings in evaluating lot of record reestablishment because the location, the structure is considered to be a historic condition that existed prior to the establishment of the current zoning code. Planning is only interested in seeing that the structure is not located over the new property line. However, in order to alleviate the billing officials concerned, one way to alleviate that would be to require the applicant to process a lot line adjustment, which would provide a minimum of three feet, and then, and thus basically meet the building code setback requirements. And I did have an opportunity to speak with the applicant, who was agreeable to that process. So in closing, staff recommends that the planning commission approve variance file VR 00-03 with, with the one condition. Are there any questions I can answer of the commission?
I have a couple of questions. If it previously existed, why is it not existing so that it has to be reestablished?
Well, for one, it's in the code, and I don't know the, the whole history of that. I think the concern was that in some areas of Oregon City, there, I've seen some lots as small as 2,500 square feet, basically 25 foot by 100 foot deep lots. And the concern may have been that if you're, if you're allowing people to recreate those type of lots, they may not really be buildable. That may be why they, they have a threshold of 5,000 feet in the code. Basically, we're trying to comply with the requirements set out in the code.
Okay, but I'm confused about, why is it that we are reestablishing? That, to me, says that at some point in time it had already been established? Or, or do we have one big lot here that's big enough to cut into two lots based on the size of the lots in the neighborhood?
It's a little bit different process than, say, a partition, because, because lot 14 was platted in that configuration in 1912. Later on, all of those are sort of combined to form one tax lot, tax lot 16700. Basically, if, say if the applicant came in and had a his, lot that was historically platted at 50 by 100, that's something that staff, staff would basically review, it would just be reviewed at a staff level. Staff would basically just confirm that, in fact, that's how it was originally platted, and it was in existence prior to the adoption of our current zoning and subdivision ordinance, and then basically write a, a letter confirming that that's, it's in its original state. And then they can take that letter to the Clackamas County Assessor's Office, and they can assign it a new tax lot number. And at that point, it would be available for them to construct a new single-family residence, but they would have to meet, they would have to meet all of the current setback requirements for, in this case, the R6 zoning district.
Okay, so that leaves my second question then. If you moved the lot line over by foot to, to handle that setback of the existing house, that's going to make lot 15, what, 100 feet smaller?
No. It's going to make it one foot less wide.
Well, what, in the overall, in the overall square footage?
Well, you've got, you've got-
It would be one foot by 100 feet, so it would be a loss of 100 square feet. So, actually, you could move it up as far, as much as seven feet, and it would still, the remainder would still meet the minimum, which is 60 by 100, because it's currently 67 by 100.
Okay.
So there is some room to, to play in that.
I was thinking of it in reverse, that you were to be taking it away from the smaller lot. Sorry.
I think, I think an answer that I give on something like that for Mr. Bullion is, is you see the lot next to it, 16800? And you've got 12 and 1300? Those are old subdivision platted lots, and 16800 has actually two legal lots of record inside of it. A person could go down to the assessor's office without any process and have that line put back in. The problem is, which Mr. Bullion brought to light, is it may go right down through the center of a house and not meet the setbacks. So then planning would have an issue with it. So, but that's, that's why they can do that, is the line was taken away for whatever reason historically, but there's still a legal lot of record there, and there's another legal lot of record on that site. And what they're doing is just placing the line back, but then it's bumping up against the setback issue.
Okay, I'm clear, thank you.
Any further questions of Mr. Bullion?
The drawing that you've supplied with our packet, it shows a concrete patio slab on that, that, patio slab does not have any attachment to the house, such as an awning of any sort?
Not that I'm aware of. It's basically, it, it, basically, it's flush with ground level.
So half of it's, it's, you've got a-
It would be basically bisected by this lot line, but it's not considered a structure because it's not, in the building code, if you have some kind of improvement that's, I believe it's more than 30 inches in height, it's considered, quote, a structure. However, a patio slab is basically-
I just wanted to make sure that it was not attached to the house?
That's, I don't believe it's attached to the house, but the applicant's representative might be able to provide further clarification on that.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, Mr. Bullion, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I have no yellow slip, so I'm assuming the applicant or representative of the applicant is not present tonight? You are present. You need to go get a yellow slip. And name and address for the record.
My name is Rob Young. I live at 19473 Lazy Creek Lane, and I am the applicant representative on this, and I didn't realize that I was, he had a question, so I didn't realize that I was going to speak. To answer your question regarding the concrete slab, what it is, is there's a basketball hoop at one end of it, so it is, there is no, exactly, that is a concrete slab. And at the property line, which will be adjusted, and to clarify, it will be over seven feet, so the other lot will be a 60 by 100 foot lot. That will be removed, the concrete slab will be removed.
Would you, would you repeat that? You said that the, the lot, the lot line is going to be moved over seven feet, or it's going to be?
With, with my understanding with planning is that the minimum lot size to meet the current R6 standards would be a 60 by 100 lot. And so-
So you're going to move it over seven?
Seven and a half feet.
Seven and a half?
It's actually, yeah, so seven and a half feet. So the newly created lot will be a 60 by 100 foot lot.
Okay, and the old lot will be 50?
Fifty-two.
So it will be over 5,000 at that time?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Young? Okay, Mr. Young, I have a question. Be sure and fill that out.
I will.
Be sure and fill that out, and make sure staff gets that with your address in.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none, is there anybody opposed to this application wishing to speak? Hearing none, we probably will not open for rebuttal. And I'll close the public portion of this hearing and open it up for staff comment, or for planning commission member comment and discussion. Any discussion?
No, I think it was a nice way they worked out the, the lot line adjustment.
I, for one, would like to see conditions placed on the variance. And the condition, condition number one would be that a lot line adjustment be made.
Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
There is actually one condition of approval-
Uh-oh.
And it's listed immediately above the exhibits on page five.
Sorry, I missed that.
It's, it was kind of snuck in there because there was only one.
Oh, okay, there it is, you've got it. And I also would like to make a specific mention in that applicant shall apply for and complete a, an insert 7.5 foot lot line adjustment process. So the existing house on lot 14 meets all building code setback requirements. Because that's what was represented to us tonight.
Okay.
So that's the only change to the, to the condition that was already placed by staff. Any other comments from the commission? Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we accept the variance file number VR 00-03. The variance to allow the reestablishment of an existing lot of record that is smaller than 5,000 square feet, with the condition of approval that the applicant shall apply for and complete a seven and a half foot lot line adjustment so that the existing house on lot 14 meets all building code setback requirements.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion that has a second. Would you please poll the commission?
No, now it is. Yes, maybe. Okay, Commissioner Horson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vergon?
Aye.
Commissioner Surratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chairperson Hewitt?
Aye.
That, and that motion again is based on the findings of fact and conclusions in the staff report, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. Okay, that concludes the variance hearing. We will move to old business, and we have a file PD 99-01, which is continuance of a previous hearing for Larry Marple Triple D Development, 14608 Glen Oak Road, Clackamas, requesting approval of a planned unit development consisting of 37 single-family homes and a 30 multi-family dwellings. We have a request for a continuance, but I feel that it's fair to listen to any public comment on this application this evening. And if the applicant is here, that would be helpful too, but probably not. We will. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you start that, the one thing I would mention is that you read the cautions for the first two applications. You might just mention that it is applicable here, and if anybody wants the criteria read, this is the time.
Okay, that would be helpful. As the city's attorney, Mr. Sullivan, mentioned, that if anybody wishing to know what the criteria is for the PUD, please let me know. And that if you don't raise an issue tonight, it cannot be raised at a subsequent hearing or, I mean, in a subsequent appeal of this process. Is there any commissioner that has any expedited contact conflicts of interest, biased, or any other statements to declare on this application?
No.
Okay, is there anybody that has visited the site?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, I have a, showing a hands of two?
Yeah.
Okay. We will open the public hearing for PD 9901.
PUD.
Well, it's PD. The file number is PD 9901, though it is for a PUD. Is there any staff report on the applicant's request?
Mr. Chairperson, the staff report is contained in a memo in the back of your packet, and it's to report that the applicant has requested an additional continuance to June 26th, year 2000. And staff recommends that the planning commission grant that requested continuance to allow the applicant sufficient time to prepare a revised application.
Okay, and that continuance request has, has buffered the 120 day?
Yes, we're fine on that.
Okay. I'll hold you to that. Does that conclude your comments?
That's correct.
Okay. I have one person neither marked pro or con. Wilma Hartung?
I don't have a slip.
Are you pro or con?
Um, not sure.
Middle of the road.
On either way.
Okay, we'll, we'll leave it that way.
Any other way? I'm pretty new to company planning commissions. The last time I was here, I was here one time before, and the process, I guess I'm not really into the process. I didn't agree with what was happening, so I have a few comments. I'm not sure you understood that we did not want the developer to pay for the whole road to be fixed, just the part that he's going to develop. There were some comments made on that after we spoke, and we didn't have any time for rebuttal, so this was kind of my time for rebuttal. My feeling was that I wanted the same-sized lots on this piece of property so that the cars would be reduced, there wouldn't be as many cars because there wouldn't be as many families. I didn't want that developer to pay for the whole road. We were just concerned the road is not developed. And since then- And since then, I've learned that in the 10-year plan, the engineer has recommended that there be no more building until the intersection at 213 and Beaver Creek be improved. I'm not exactly sure, somebody told me that, that they had just read that at one of the meetings that we were at. And I was wondering if you're going to go with that recommendation, if you're not, why? Also, I have a couple of comments about when we were here last time and I was talking. And afterwards, one of the people on the panel mentioned about us voting for the gas tax and we'd get our roads improved. It was said probably four or five times, and I thought that was pretty inappropriate and very rude. My last comment is geared towards the chairman. At the last meeting, because, and I just want to understand this. At the last meeting, you said that you would vote for either plan because they were within the law. So I'm wondering if it's, and why we even bother coming here? Does that mean that the next time I have a concern about something being built in my area, that I should just call you? Find out if it's within the law, then I don't have to come here and waste my time in yours? And that's all I have to say.
Okay, one thing for the record, you need to state your name and address, we've got it on the...
My name is Wilma Hartung, and I live at 14445 Talawa Drive. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, before you, before you leave, you've asked the chair a question.
Well, I wasn't sure you would...
Well, I'll, I'll respond.
Respond, that's great.
It's a, it's a fair...
I appreciate it.
It's a very fair question. What the Planning Commission has to review from any aspect of a, of an application before us is the criteria. I may not like something that comes forward, and in many cases, I don't like it. But if it meets the criteria, I, I have no justification to vote against something. Whether it be a PUD, a variance, or a conditional use, I may not think it's appropriate for whatever personal reasons I have. But I've got a book here that gives me criteria A through Z. And it says, if it meets these criteria, this person has a right to move forward with his application unencumbered by me. Unless I can point to a certain criteria and say, this doesn't seem to meet the criteria here. So both applications were meeting the criteria, the basic criteria for a, for a planned unit development. And that's how we have to view it as a planning commission, is we're stuck with criteria. Whether we all agree that it's a terrible thing for the community or not, doesn't stop the developer from developing what he wants to develop.
So why have public input? Why bother with us? Why don't you just tell us all to go home?
Okay.
That you can make up your mind from your criteria?
Good question. One of the things that the public is able to do is to bring to light very important information as adjacent property owners, okay? In a PUD process, the PUD itself meets the mustard for the standards. But how does it impact adjacent properties? We don't know because we don't live there. How does it impact the traffic on that road? How does it, how does it impact the, the increased traffic flow on that road? And what does that road act like when there's a full lot of traffic on it? We don't know that.
Okay, then you shouldn't have said you'd vote for either plan because you haven't got all the information. Especially this 10-year plan where the engineer recommended that you not build there. So that doesn't make sense to me. It also doesn't make sense to me that we're in 6,000-square-foot lots all the way up that road to Beaver Creek Road, and they're going to be building on 4,000-square lots. Right here, just a few minutes ago, they were asking to get different-sized lots that you approved. So you had to approve those 4,000-square-foot lots. That's not in your criteria. You had to do a separate recommendation for that, didn't you? Or am I misunderstanding?
It's in a PUD process that those are done. It's in a, they can ask for certain-sized lots.
But you could, you could say no to that, though. Because, because as, as the community who live here and pay taxes came to you and say, we don't want that in our neighborhood, then you should be listening to us. You shouldn't be saying, these two plans are within the law, so I'd vote for either one of them. I felt like it was a slap in my face when we were here last time when you said that. I felt like you didn't listen to me at all. And so I was very upset when I left.
May I make, may I make one, one comment?
Go ahead.
Being rather new on the Planning Commission myself...
And I knew this, too.
I didn't understand the whole process either. And I also realized that, that a lot of it's my fault for not paying attention to what was going on in my own town. And once I realized that I had a voice, that, okay, I wasn't going to make an immediate effect, but I could make my viewpoint heard. And through the process, the Planning Commission, the city staff, the city commission would understand that their rules or there are regulations that we're reading right now, maybe are not meeting our current needs and need to, to be looked at. And we're really digging into that right now as, as a brand-new planning commission. We're trying to get these things that aren't meeting our needs as a city in whole and straighten some of these things out. And that's one of the things that we tried to do with the planned unit development. And I'm not sure that we got a whole lot of response, not the response that we should have, from the city as a whole. And so we set these regulations out, and now we're starting to hear back. You know, we're hearing, okay, well, these rules that we made are working for some people, they're not working for other people. But until, you know, we appreciate you coming forward and, and making these statements. Otherwise, we're going to go with the book, with the rules.
But you're going with the book anyway, because that's what the criteria says, that's what you're...
Currently, right now, but they change year to year. These rules change.
Let me, let me clarify one thing for the record. I apologize on the record to you personally, because I didn't mean to upset anybody in this process. What I stated was that I could vote for either application based on the criteria that we were reviewing that night. Not that I was totally in favor of it or against it, but I could vote for either one based on the criteria of a PUD.
If you had said it like that...
I know, I didn't.
You were very flippant and just, that's, that's the way you came across, very flippant.
Again, I apologize for that.
I accept your apology.
And there is a lot more criteria to be reviewed, or the applicant wouldn't have gone away and asked for a continuance at this point because he has a lot more things he needs to address. And one of the things that he was addressing that was brought out in public comment was the traffic issue. Okay, the other thing was the size of the lots. And I'm not sure how he fared on the granny flats. He was going to go back to the public forum, I understand, and talk to the neighbors and find out what everybody wanted.
He didn't.
In the Neighborhood Association or whatever.
He didn't.
Okay, well, I'm sorry he didn't. But obviously, he's spending some time revamping some process from comments made here at this forum. And that's why it's crucial that people such as yourself and neighbors around you come to this forum and be heard, because we listen. And to be honest with you, I haven't made up my mind one way or another on it.
I thought you had from that night.
Just basically, the criteria that I was seeing was being meant. But I haven't discussed the transportation system. I haven't seen any, any future, you brought up this...
10-year plan?
The 10-year plan.
Engineer's report.
I haven't seen that report. Those all impact the application along with the criteria, so...
So you will look at the 10-year plan?
Rest be assured that I will look at the whole package before we vote. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you for coming in.
Before you go, I do have one comment. Is that 10-year, that engineering plan that you're referring to, is that something? This question is both, both for you and also for the other members of the commission. Is that something that has been in front of us as...
You have to look that way.
As submitted to us?
You know, I'm not sure which 10-year thing is being referred to here. We do have a draft TSP under, under review. And also, for the application that was reviewed, is part of your packet, you had a traffic study and several different statements about impacts on traffic, both short-term and long-term. So from what Ms. Hartung has said, I can't identify the exact source. But I do know that you've already reviewed some traffic information, and you will have more when the applicant comes back with a revised plan as he's requested, he's asked to be able to do.
Yeah, I would ask, to the extent that it's possible that that could be brought to my attention, that's something that I would like to see.
Does any other commissioners have that packet? Okay, then I will find where it was and I will get it to you.
Great. And, and make it part of the record. You can, you can add to the file, correct?
Yes. Just, just so you know, and I think everybody in the Planning Commission knows this, if the plan hasn't been adopted, you can't consider it as a criterion.
Correct.
You have to go with the criterion at the time the application was filed. That's state law.
Right.
I have a comment. Maggie, could you explain what the TSP is?
Transportation System Plan is a requirement of the state to bring each jurisdiction into kind of the, the modern age and also to address concerns that the state has deemed important in, in cities. Including multimodal transportation options, pedestrian-friendly streets, connectivity between areas of the city, and basic layout of, of which streets need the most improvements over time. And so the TSP comes with a capital improvements plan, or at least some suggestions of how various improvements that are necessary will be funded in the future. And the city is just beginning to get its draft together for that particular document. My guess is it won't be reviewed at the Planning Commission level until September, October of this year.
And Nancy, crush hour is the lead on that project?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you won't be able to consider the 10-year plan, then?
By what I'm hearing from the city attorney, that if it, if it wasn't in effect at the time of the application, the applicant is not under that criteria, which is fair.
The TSP, whatever criteria, in the, in the previous staff report, whatever criteria was applicable to this PUD was, was what was analyzed by the engineering department and the traffic people. So the information that's in that document is the relevant adopted information that can be considered. If that's your 10-year plan, then, then that's the information that you want to resubmit into the record.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the application before us, the PUD? Is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition to this planned unit development and the continuance? Okay? Okay? Would you come up here to the front and give us your name and address?
My name is Steve Hartung. I live at 14445 Talawa Drive. I did, my wife just spoke before you. And I, if I may, I'd like to reinforce what she said, because right now, the problem with the Caulfield Neighborhood Association is holding it together. I don't know if you realize the impact. There was, there was a great number of them at the last meeting. And they felt, they came away from this meeting, that meeting, with the feeling that they were not useful and served no useful purpose. And therefore, right now, we're battling to keep it together because they see no need to have the association. So I just kind of wanted to emphasize what the wife said. I, I'm sure that was not your intent. However, the way it came across, that's the way it was interpreted. It was interpreted by about 30 families from the Caulfield Association, so you can understand the enormity of the crisis.
What I will do is I will write the chair of that association, you say it's a Caulfield Association?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will write the chair a letter explaining that, based on tonight's discussion and testimony, that I was probably in error of using proper terminology to make it clear that I wasn't, I wasn't passing judgment call on the PUD as presented. But moreover, looking at the criteria, and it seemed to meet the criteria on a basic level, barring other input from the community and adjacent property owners. And hopefully, that'll clarify for them that they are an important, and I will, I will reiterate that in a, in my letter as well.
I think that'd be most appreciative, because even myself, and I, I'm an environmental protection specialist for the federal government. I deal with the public a lot. And I came away with the same impression from what you said after the meeting. So I was among those that would thought, well, what's the purpose?
Okay, I apologize to you as well. And it's not my intent to ramshod anything through this process.
Understand, and it's not my intent to, to be derogatory. It's my intent to make you aware, perhaps, of more careful phraseology when you have such a large group from a neighborhood association, so we don't discourage the purpose of the association. The association feels they're here to serve a purpose. And I believe you, it was unintentional. However, the people came away with the feeling that they serve no useful purpose, and...
Well, to give you some background, we had a neighborhood association show up on a previous PUD that literally changed everybody's mind on the commission. That it was impacting the adjacent property owners to such an extent that we couldn't approve it. And I can't go into the reasons for that.
Understand that.
But there was a valuable input by the neighborhood individuals and the association. So they are very important to this process. And remember, we only listened to about this much of the process, and then it came to a close because it was continued.
Understand, understand.
So the continuation, I hope that those neighbors that felt that way come back. And if I can get a letter before the next meeting, I will get one out. I, I guarantee by next week. And try and prompt the neighborhood association and its members if they'll copy that to their members. And I, I, just hopefully, we can get this back on board.
I'll endeavor to make sure it's passed around. And if you'd be so kind to explain to them as you explained to us tonight, I'm sure that it would do a lot in soothing the feelings, if you will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chairperson, you, I wanted to just add some, some additional comments directed in very general terms. And I will make an educated guess that there are probably people who are members of the, who have been here at the prior hearing, who are members of the, the Neighborhood Association, who are actually taking the opportunity of watching this on, on television. And my general comment, again, not directed to this particular application, but in general, is that the public involvement is very important to us and that we listen to the public. We need to adjudicate between different needs and different laws and rules and regulations, but we always need to listen to what the public has to say, and we do. And neighborhood associations are very important to us. It's really the structure that provides us in a more organized fashion to get input from the community. And it would be, and it's a very, to us, the stronger neighborhood associations seem to be the ones that have a continual presence with the Planning Commission and the other commissions that operate in, in Oregon City. And it's, and it's very important, and, and we want to encourage that, that happening. So to that, for what that's worth, and again, I'm directing this not just to your, this particular application, but in general, to all the applications that are in front of us.
I understood. And I'd submit that it's, it's imperative that the neighborhood associations hear that, especially more, especially the first-time associations such as ourselves, were at the last meeting. Because I felt, from what I've seen in past, we were particularly unified, a large turnout with genuine concerns. And if more thought had been put forth as it has been tonight, perhaps they'd have come away feeling a bit better than they did. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And could I grab that yellow slip because it has to be part of the record now? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to check, Mr. Hartung, before I leave, I'm going to check with the city attorney to make sure that I can go ahead and write a letter like that to the association.
Yeah, so long as you give a copy to all the parties, that's fine.
Okay.
Staff will make sure.
And so if I write the letter and give it to staff and they can mail it out? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Okay. Before us is a request for a continuance. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor or against this application for continuance? Or this request for continuance? Hearing none? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion with regards to application PD 99-01. That the continuance, requested continuance be, be approved as recommended by staff. Bear with me a minute, I just want to make sure it's recommended.
It is.
It is, as recommended by staff. And I further want to add that the, the record, the, the issues and the records be kept... And I further want to add that the record of the issues in the record be kept open to the same extent that they were kept open at the close of the prior hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion that has a second. Would you please pull the commission?
Commissioner Orson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vergon?
Aye.
Commissioner Surratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chairperson Hewitt?
Aye.
Motion carries. This item is continued to June twenty-sixth, year two thousand.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes old business. Is there any new business staff communications to the commission? That's what you get for talking on the side. Is there any new business?
No, there are none. There is none.
Staff communications to the commission. Okay. Is there any comments by the commission members?
I do have one comment. I'm just interested to know, because I haven't kept up with it, what the results were with the ordinance on the ballot with regards to city annexation, whether that was approved or denied.
There was one, the most recent one that I'm aware of, it was property on Glen Oak I think it was Dorothy Hess's property, and it was approved. Thanks.
Okay, no other comments?
I just have one comment, just a question, really. I feel like I'm missing something here on this previous hearing that we just went through, because it seems to me that the public process that took place at the previous hearing was very valuable, because the applicant went away to redo his application based on what went on in that meeting. And, you know, the feeling that those people had, that their input had no value, I don't understand, because clearly, it had the value of sending the applicant back to redo his application.
Well, you know, I kind of hear what I heard tonight was, is that by not choosing my words carefully, and they were new to this process, that when I stated, and I remember stating the fact, that I could vote for either one, but I was more partial to the other, just laid it on the line to them, I would think, you know, in a meeting like this, that I was in favor of either one, and I was going to vote in favor regardless of what the outcome was, and that wasn't my intention. I think that's what I heard them saying when they left that night. They said, why did we even show up? He's going to vote for it anyway. You know, irregardless of what we had to say. And that was a, that was probably a very poor choice of words that I used, and I acknowledge that. And so what I'm going to do is try and clear that up through a letter. I think that's what they're mostly reacting against, not that we didn't hear what they had to say, and it was important, but when they heard that from me, it kind of, it kind of just blew a hole in their balloon, because they thought that they were really, you know, going for some good measures. And when they heard me, what seemed to say, oh, I'm just going to vote for it anyway, they walked away with disillusionment, which I can understand. So that's what I heard tonight.
Well, you know, based on the fact that the applicant is redoing the application, I think that their effort was well-taken.
No, I agree. I agree, but I think that we need clarity. Let's get us back on board with the neighborhood association.
Commissioners, you may want to make that discussion in front of the parties.
Yes. Okay. End of discussion? Okay. I, do I hear a motion that we close the planning commission meeting tonight?
Wait, I have one more comment for the staff. One of my thoughts this last week was, how close are we to finding out where we are with Metro's housing goals?
We're probably a couple months from a detailed report. I think I had suggested that that wouldn't happen until September, October, but we'll be much farther along than I thought.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission members? Hearing none. Do I have a motion that we close this planning commission meeting?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.